Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started. I'd like to welcome you all to the Wadsworth City School District Board of Education Regular Meeting for Monday, September 8th. If you would stand and join me in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Beeman.
Julie Beatty.
Here.
Amanda Gordon.
Here.
Jill Stevens.
Here.
Tim Beck.
Here.
Ava Canada.
Here.
And then, Ms. Woodwell, Gary McComas is absent.
Okay. If I could get a motion for approval and signing of the minutes from our last meeting?
Salute.
Second, any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Beeman.
Amanda Gordon.
Aye.
Jill Stevens.
Aye.
Tim Beck.
Aye.
Julie Beatty.
Aye.
Okay, before we get started with the student recognition, and I see a lot of excited faces, so we can't wait to meet you all, we would like to introduce to you our student liaison for this upcoming school year, Ava Canada. We'd like to welcome you and we're excited to have you, and if you wouldn't mind telling us a few things about yourself?
Hi, I'm Ava Canada. I'm a senior here at Wadsworth. I have lived in Wadsworth my whole life, but I attended Northside Christian Academy from kindergarten to eighth grade, and I started my freshman year here at Wadsworth High School. I've been the show choir for four years. I'm also part of Huddle, National Honor Society, Student Council, Be Kind Wadsworth, Peer Mentors, and Grizzly Leaders. I'm also a member of the Governor's School Safety Advisory Board. I have two local jobs and I am very involved in my community service. I am truly so grateful for this opportunity. Thank you for having me.
I'd like to know what you do in all of your free time. Boy, goodness. But, but, but welcome. And we would also like to ask if you would be so kind as to pass out the student recognitions, and we'll move on to that step, okay? Thank you, welcome. Okay, Dr. Hill.
Thank you, President Gordon. At this time, I would ask for our Students of the Month and Principals to please make their way backstage. Board, once the Student of the Month presentations are over, we'll reconvene up here for the discussion on our policy.
I'm the principal at Franklin Elementary School, and it is with great pride that we celebrate Reese Pickard as our September Board of Education Student of the Month. Reese is an outstanding fourth-grade student and a wonderful representative of Franklin Elementary. She stands out as a model of kindness, respect, and has a dedication to learning. Her positive spirit, helpful nature, and commitment to doing her best each day leaves a lasting impact on our school community. She is the kind of student who not only works hard, but lifts up those around her with encouragement and compassion. Reese is a proud member of the Franklin Elementary community. She loves coming to school each day because she gets to see her friends and learn new things. One of her favorite memories is the foam party at the end of last school year. Reese's favorite subject is language arts because she loves to, she loves to read and write. She enjoys the chance to express her creativity through writing and go on adventures with new books. Beyond the classroom, Reese shines as an athlete and enjoys playing basketball and volleyball. When she thinks about the future, Reese dreams of becoming a hairstylist because she loves the creativity and fun of styling hair, something that she already enjoys doing with her little sister Claire, who's sitting there in the audience. She looks up most to her mom, describing her as a loving person who helps, protects, and inspires her every day. She says her mom helps her with anything she needs and makes her the happiest. She also loves that her mom is a teacher and is always helping others. Reese also values the time she spends with her family, especially going out to eat together. She shared that these moments are special because they all get to be together, talk, and have fun. When asked what advice she would give to a new student at Franklin, Reese said, "Don't be nervous because you will be taken care of and have a lot of fun." Her words perfectly capture the welcoming and supportive spirit that she brings to our school. Here's what Reese's teachers have to say about her. Reese is a hard-working and dedicated fourth-grader who truly exemplifies the Franklin way. She approaches challenges with perseverance and a growth mindset, inspiring those around her to do their best. Reese demonstrates responsibility, compassion, and integrity each day, making her a role model for students across grade levels. Reese, people are lucky to have you in their lives, and you make the world a better place. Please join me in congratulating Reese Pickard on this well-deserved honor.
I am honored to recognize fourth-grader Marshall Pramick as Eisham Elementary Student of the Month. Marshall's teacher, Ms. Haake, shares that Marshall is a leader in class. He is an organized student, a quick learner, and works hard in school. Marshall scored at the advanced level on the third-grade state math test and participates in the Gifted Learners Lunch Bunch Program. His previous teachers describe him as respectful, reliable, responsible, and, most importantly, kind to others. When I asked Marshall what he enjoys most about school and about Eisham, he told me he loves getting to see his friends, that Eisham hosts fun events, and that our building is beautiful both inside and out. His favorite subject is art because he enjoys drawing, which is one of his favorite hobbies. Looking ahead, Marshall sees himself becoming either an artist or a video game designer, creating both the artwork and the coding for the games. Of course, he wisely noted that his career dreams may change as he gets older. Outside of school, Marshall enjoys reading books from the Zelda series, playing video games, spending time with his family, and playing board games. He looks up to his older brother, and when asked what advice he would give his kindergarten self, Marshall said, "Don't doubt it, try it. If you're scared of something, just give it a try because it could end up being something fun." We are so proud of Marshall. He is a shining example of what it means to be an Eisham Elementary Student of the Month.
My name is Laura Maslik, proud principal at Lincoln Elementary, and it is my pleasure to introduce Merida Kramer, Lincoln's September Board Student of the Month. Merida is the daughter of Michael and Amanda Kramer, and here is what her teachers, Mrs. Barker and Ms. Sibio, had to say when nominating her. In the short time that we have been in school, Merida has already proven to both of her teachers that she can be counted on as a dependable and reliable member of our class. She models the Lincoln Way with excellent behavior and makes great choices at all times. She is an active participant in our daily discussions and is excited to learn. Her interactions with peers are thoughtful and considerate. Merida exudes a quiet confidence but doesn't hesitate to ask questions. We are so proud of the effort that she puts in every single day. To know Merida is to know someone with a truly big heart. She's a lover of animals, and she has two dogs, Akiri and Pippa, two cats, Callie and Leo. She says her cats are her favorite pets in the whole world, and she wishes she could take them everywhere with her. In fact, Merida, if she could plan a party, she said it would absolutely be cat-themed for sure. When she's not learning at school, Merida loves to read at home, watch TV, play on her tablet, and spend time with her favorite toys, and of course, her cats. Her love of reading is a passion she brings to school every day. She is a true bookworm and especially loves The Adventures in the Dogman series and Cat Kid Comic Club books. Merida's favorite subjects are science, reading, and writing, and she has a special talent for cursive. She has worked hard to get really great at her signature. Looking to the future, Merida wants to be a teacher or a principal when she grows up because she's had the best teachers and a great principal herself. She hopes to one day teach fourth-grade language arts so she can be a part of helping kids grow, just as her teachers have helped her. When asked about somebody she looks up to, Merida had a special message for her third-grade teacher, Mrs. Shepherd. Merida says that Mrs. Shepherd was, and I quote, "Always uplifting to me and other kids. She let me take, she let me take my time when I needed it and gave me space when I was having a hard day. She was so understanding." It is clear that Merida has learned so much from Mrs. Shepherd, especially how to be uplifting and understanding to others. Speaking of things she loves, Merida's favorite meal is sausage and cheese pizza, and she has a three-way tie for her favorite desserts: mint chocolate chip ice cream, her mom's homemade pumpkin pie, and also her mom's peppermint fudge. Merida, your best advice to younger students, which is keep growing every day and be uplifting to others and show them your kindness, shows just how big your heart is. We are so proud of you, not only for your hard work, but for the wonderful person you are. Will you all help me congratulate Merida Kramer?
My name is Dave Ryder, and I'm the principal at Overlook Elementary. Callahan Tucker, a fourth-grade student at Overlook Elementary, is well-deserving of the honor of Board Student of the Month. Mr. Vaseus' teacher said it best. Callahan was nominated due to his determination and drive to always do his best, his genuine curiosity for learning, and his kindness to everyone he meets. Callahan is an amazing role model for what it means to be an Overlook Grizzly. He is safe, kind, and responsible in all that he does, both inside and outside of the classroom. Callahan is not only involved here at Overlook through various activities, but he remains diligent and responsible while keeping a busy schedule as a wrestler, a very good wrestler. Callahan has shown in just a few short weeks how amazing he is inside and out, and I'm excited to see him continue his leadership in fourth grade this year at Overlook. I am so proud of you, Callahan. At Overlook, Callahan helps deliver our morning announcements and assists our preschoolers during drop-off. Callahan's favorite subjects are reading and art. He loves getting lost in fantasy books where he can escape to places where anything is possible. He enjoys drawing superheroes and creating his own comics, which is no surprise since he hopes to be an author or an illustrator when he grows up. Outside of school, Callahan enjoys swimming and playing with his family's dog, Glitch. He shared a memorable vacation with his family at Riviera Maya in Mexico, commenting on how cool it was to stay at an all-inclusive resort. Callahan looks up to two people: former wrestler, Wadsworth wrestler, and three-time state champion Jackson Joy, who has inspired him to try to become Wadsworth's first-ever four-time state wrestling champion, and his dad, whom he calls "the coolest person I know." Wrestling is a major passion for Callahan. He trained year-round and has already earned impressive accolades, including winning an OAC Ohio State Championship last spring and placing third at the Youth National Tournament in Tulsa, Oklahoma. Beyond his academic achievements and wrestling success, Callahan is simply a great kid who shows up every day ready to, ready to learn. Overlook is blessed to have such a dedicated and kind-hearted student. Please join me in congratulating Callahan Tucker as Overlook Elementary's September Board Student of the Month.
My name is Carrie Hampshire, and I am the principal at Valley View Elementary, and I am super excited to introduce you to our Student of the Month, Ben Gruell. Ben was nominated by Mrs. Octella, his classroom teacher, and in her nomination, she had a couple of things to say about Ben. Ben has demonstrated our Valley View character traits of being safe, kind, and responsible to a T. He's a perfect recipient for this award. She created an acrostic poem that she feels represents Ben. Ben is a baseball star. As you can see, that is his heart, all the time. Ben is energetic and excited about learning. Ben never gives up. He works hard on everything he does. I also had the opportunity to sit down with Ben, and he helped me create what we were going to say this evening about him. Ben has made a wonderful transition into fourth grade at Valley View. He's shown leadership by being safe, kind, and responsible, like we talked about in all areas of the building. He has adjusted to our routines and has become an incredible helper throughout the school day. He has served as one of our announcement readers and has been very helpful to our younger students as they learn their way around the building. We are very proud of the skill set that he has demonstrated, and therefore, we know that he is going to have a great fourth-grade year. Ben wanted me to make sure that everyone knew that one of his favorite parts of the day is when he gets to go home and talk to his mom and dad. He loves to tell them about everything that happened that day at school and about the things that he was enjoying while he was there. He lives at home with mom and dad and his brother Sam, who just started kindergarten this year. Ben had to give him a shout-out on the announcements. He likes playing with his dog, Annie, and in his spare time, he likes to play baseball, and he enjoys reading Dogman and Magic Treehouse books. His favorite subjects are math and science, and he really enjoys going outside to play with his neighbors and his brother. I asked Ben if he had any advice for our younger students at Valley View, and this is what he told me. Be a good citizen. Stay out of trouble. Be kind, especially to new students. Make sure to include others when you're playing outside, and be responsible for your actions. As you can tell, we have a wonderful young man at Valley View who is going to help lead our building throughout this year. Ben, we know that you are a young grizzly and you are ready to roar. We hope that you will help lead our way. If you would, please congratulate Ben in being our Student of the Month.
Hello and good evening, Board of Education and Wadsworth community. I'm Brandon Cobb, principal of Wadsworth Intermediate School. I'm here tonight to celebrate our September Board Student of the Month, Tori LaGray. Tori is the daughter of Carrie and Matt, also has sisters Haley, Maddie, seven-month-old Phoenix, and brother Andy. Tori's a sixth-grader at WIS and was nominated by her teachers, Mrs. Back, Mrs. Dahl, and Mrs. Johnson. Here's what her teachers had to say. We are proud to recognize Tori LaGray as Team Perseverance Board Student of the Month for her outstanding character and positive impact on our school community, all within just a few short weeks of school beginning. Tori has already made a lasting impression through her accountability, respect, and self-advocacy. She comes to class prepared, completes her work on time, and takes full responsibility for her learning. Whether working independently or in a group, she consistently shows initiative and follows through on her commitments. Tori also treats her classmates, teachers, and school staff with kindness and respect. She listens attentively and uses polite language. Her positive attitude helps create a welcoming and inclusive classroom environment. One of the most impressive qualities Tori has demonstrated is her ability to advocate for herself. She asks thoughtful questions, seeks help when needed, and speaks up respectfully when she has ideas or concerns. This confidence and self-awareness are commendable characteristics. We're so excited to see how Tori will continue to grow and shine this year. Thank you for being a role model for others and a valued member of our sixth-grade class. Please help me congratulate WIS September Board Student of the Month, Tori LaGray.
My name is Chris Roberts, proud principal at Wadsworth Middle School, and tonight, it is my honor to recognize Zachary Barco as the September Wadsworth Middle School Board of Education Student of the Month. Zach is a young man who embodies commitment, compassion, and a drive to succeed in everything he does. When asked about his favorite subject, Zach explained that he enjoys all of his classes. What makes him unique is his understanding of how they are all connected together, motivating him to look for ways to integrate what he's learning across all of his subjects. This curiosity and creativity set him apart as a true learner. One of Zach's most remarkable achievements goes beyond the classroom. While on a family trip, he faced a medical emergency involving one of his relatives. Because of his quick thinking and prompt actions, Zach helped save a life. For his courage and leadership, he is being honored by the Boy Scouts of America with the Distinguished Medal of Merit, a powerful testament to his character and bravery. At Wadsworth Middle School, Zach credits his success to his outstanding teachers and his strong work ethic. He understands the importance of studying, completing assignments, and putting forth his best effort and staying motivated by keeping his eyes on the future. He also points to the support and encouragement of his parents, who remind him to be his best and always lift him up when needed. Outside of the classroom, Zach is, is active in Boy Scouts, where he has already achieved the rank of Star and is currently working toward the rank of Life with his sights set on reaching Eagle in the near future. He is also studying Thai in honor of his family's heritage with the goal of speaking fluently with his cousins and grandparents in Thailand. Zach is also a talented musician who plays trombone in the Wadsworth Middle School Concert and Jazz Band and is hoping to soon transition to a new instrument, the alto saxophone. Zach's influences include his parents and the dedicated staff at Wadsworth Middle School, such as Mr. Schneider, whose encouragement and passion for teaching have made a lasting impact on Zach's learning journey. When it comes to advice for his peers, Zach keeps it simple yet powerful: never give up and always stay focused on your goals. He knows that challenges and setbacks are opportunities to improve, and he approaches each one as a chance to learn and grow. Looking ahead, Zach hopes to be involved in Student Council, continue earning excellent grades, and use leadership opportunities to make a positive impact on our school. Zach, your dedication to learning, your bravery in the face of a challenge, and your commitment to leading by example make us proud to honor you as Wadsworth Middle School's Student of the Month. Congratulations. Please help me in honoring Mr. Zachary Barco.
I'm Vincent Suber, and I'm the proud principal at Wadsworth High School, and we proudly present Vincent Gambacini as September's Career Tech Student of the Month. Vincent is the son of Sheila and Stefan Gambacini. He enjoys spending quality time with his family, including his parents, brother Dominic, and sister Angelina. They enjoy playing board games and card games. In the summer, he loves playing outdoor games, especially pool volleyball. Vinny is a highly accomplished student at Wadsworth High School, demonstrating excellence both inside and outside the classroom. He is a member of Student Council, National Honor Society, National Technical Honor Society, Hope Squad, and W C F Club. He plays soccer, and last year, he was second-team All-Suburban League, second-team All-GASSCA for Division Two, and All-Gazette. He also plays tennis for the Grizzlies, where he was a two-time captain and received Honor Mission All-Suburban League and Honor Mission All-Gazette last year. In Career Tech, he competed in the Boston Woodbridge Building Competition, and he plans on attending again this school year. He also has completed the OSHA 10-hour general industry certification and completed 12 optional courses on tolling you. Throughout his four years of Wadsworth High School and his Career Tech program, Vincent has maintained an impressive 4.48 grade point average while taking four Advanced Placement classes and 12 college credit course classes while being involved in all those activities. Vincent has had a positive impact on Wadsworth High School and its compact programs. One of his teachers, Mr. Kip Shipley, had this to say about him. Vincent Gambacini is a senior in Engineering Design and Technology. Vinny is a very focused young man who works hard on and off the field. He holds himself and others to high standards and represents a Florida City's Compact Engineering Design and Technology Program well. Vinny's favorite classes are Engineering Design Technology, AP Physics, AP Chemistry, AP Calculus, and CCP Spanish. Vincent has been playing soccer ever since he could walk. He is a three-year varsity letter earner and a two-year captain. His position is Center Defensive Mid, and after graduation, Vinny plans on attending college to pursue a bachelor's and master's degree in civil engineering. He is also considering playing soccer at the collegiate level, but he is undecided as to where he will attend college. Whatever college Vinny attends, they'll be receiving a remarkable and determined young man. Please join me in congratulating Vincent Gambacini.
And Wadsworth High School proudly presents Kami Ross as September's Student of the Month. Kami is the daughter of Mike and Lauren Ross. Kami enjoys supporting her siblings, Parker and Paige Ross, in their various sports throughout their high school career. She also cherishes the time spent at family dinners, especially when her grandparents are able to join. At Wadsworth High School, Kami exemplifies leadership and dedication. She is involved in a wide range of activities, including National Honor Society, Huddle, Peer Mentoring, Yearbook, and Grizzly Leaders. She has also served on the Student Council for three years, holding the role of Vice President for two of them. Kami is an outstanding athlete, earning an impressive, or so earned an impressive 12 varsity letters. As a four-year letter earner across country, she has helped her team win district and regional championships twice. The cross-country event also placed fifth and eighth at state during her tenure. She will also be a four-letter earner in track, where her eight-by-eight relay team qualified for nationals for the past three years. Additionally, she'll be a four-year letter earner in gymnastics, rounding out a truly remarkable high school career. Kami's academic commitment is very impressive. This year, she's tackled a managed schedule of three Advanced Placement classes, AP Physics, AP Bio, and AP Research, and three college credit course classes, Calculus II, Calculus III, and Empires of the Ancient World. Over her high school career, she has completed a total of eight AP classes and six CCP classes while still maintaining an active role in her extracurricular activities. This course, though, combined with all the sports she does, she has an outstanding 4.53 grade point average, which is a reflection of her dedication to her education and athletics. One of Kami's teachers, Mrs. Allison Parsons, had this to say about her. Kami Ross is so much more than an excellent student. Kami makes Wadsworth High School a better place. All the qualities that make her a great student in the classroom, such as her work ethic, determination, leadership, and kindness spill over into everything she does. Kami is always welcoming to those who need a friend. She encourages her classmates to take pride in Wadsworth and make it the best school possible. She celebrates her wins and helps them win indeed encouragement. Kami inspires and uplifts everyone around her. She is truly deserving to be Student of the Month. After graduating high school, Kami plans to attend college and major in chemical engineering with the intent to simultaneously finish her medical school prerequisites and awfully pursue a career in pediatrics and many other student activities. No matter which college Kami attends, her determination, character, and drive will ensure her success. Please join me in congratulating Kami Ross.
Congratulations again to all of our Students of the Month. Thank you, family and friends, for joining us this evening. This time, we're going to transition to the business portion of the board meeting. While all of you are more than welcome to stay, you're also welcome to leave if you came just for the Students of the Month tonight. Thank you.
I always feel like I need to step up my game after I hear all these wonderful things our students are doing, so, thank you.
Okay, I will move along to the administrative discussion items. Dr. Hill?
Sure. Thank you. Tonight, we have one discussion item. It's Board of Education Policy 5136, Personal Communication Devices. May sound familiar with, to you. We spent September, October, November, and December last year at these meetings discussing this policy as a result of changes that happened in a previous version of the law, which required school districts to create a policy that minimized the amount of cellular telephone used during the school day. What has changed since you adopted the board policy in February of '25 earlier this year is that the state budget is that the State Budget Bill, Ohio House Bill 96, included language that was signed into law goes into effect at the end of this month, September 30th. There requires a Board of Education to adopt a policy governing the use of cellular telephones by students during school hours. The policy shall prohibit all cellular telephone used by students during the instructional day, except as described in Division C2 of the section, or if permitted under the building's Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan, adopted under a different section of the Revised Code. If determined appropriate by the District Board, or if included in a student's individual education program, students may use cellular telephones or other electronic communication devices for student learning, or to monitor or address a health concern. It goes on with some other requirements. The policy that is now required has to be in place no later than January 1st of 2026. What's interesting about this is the way that it's worded is that it's during instructional day, and if determined appropriate by the Board, students may use cellular telephones or other devices for student learning. The intention of what the State Department of Education and workforce has said is that basically at any point in time during a school day, cellular telephone use is not permitted with those narrow exceptions focusing on an IEP or health-related concerns or the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan. But what is actually written in the law that was signed into law seems to allow for more than what the department is saying. I shared with you previously some information from our policy provider Neola in one of their legal alerts put together by one of the legal councils that advises them, that they are basically believing that a Board of Education still has the right to be able to determine how cell phones are used during the instructional day, and if they're used for learning within the day. Part of the confusion about this, if we want to call it confusion, is that instructional day is not defined in the statute, but other statutes do define instructional day. As an example, when we are, what hours we're able to count towards the minimum number of hours in a school year. Instructional hours are not, we're not permitted to count things like lunch. And so that leads to further confusion when the department puts out their interpretation of the new law. So we put it on as a discussion item tonight. I guess before, open it up for comments and anything that you would like me to be able to do or bring back to future meetings, I would suggest to you that the policy that you put in place after last February, after reviewing the language that's in here, reading the legal opinion from Neola, talking through this a little bit with our district legal council, who asked for some additional time to look into things a little bit more on his own, I would tell you that there is a strong argument to be made that your current policy actually complies with the new law. And I guess as we decide how to proceed, one of the questions that should probably be asked is, absent a change in the State Budget Bill that caused this discussion, would we be revisiting this topic that we spent six months on last, not even a year ago? And so, again, I think it's also important to note that you have all of the information on what it is that you can choose to do by what the law states, not what some other entity may be telling you that you have to do. I think it's really important that you understand, or at least have the facts before you to be able to give you the idea of where can you make decisions, and where have decisions already been made for you at the state, at the state level. In this case, it appears that there's at least a strong argument to be made that you've reserved the right to be able to make some decisions within how the law is written. So tonight, we're not necessarily looking for a decision on how to proceed. If there's not a rush to have to make a decision, again, it's January 1st of 2026, if you were to choose to make changes to the policy, just looking for some idea from you on the direction to move, if there's things that you would like with additional information, whatever else is on, is on your mind. Thank you.
Anybody have any comments, or Tim?
Yeah, I mean, I'm glad that we have a policy that appears to be suitable for our future. You know, if we do decide, or if we feel like we need to explore that, or have further discussion, you know, down the line, I would be open to that. I don't, I have a comment on this that, you know, there is, seems to be a lot of gray area, particularly when it says, you know, during supervised activities such as transitioning between classes, recess, meal periods, and field trips. And I started thinking like, well, what about when the band goes on a trip to New York, or the choir is going to Disney? Does that mean they can't be on their phones at all during that time? So that would be, that's, that's just a little, gonna be a tricky thing, I think, for all schools to have to kind of discern what, or how to interpret this. I also just feel like, you know, the, each community, according to the how revised code, has a right, or at least according to the how revised, revised code, to sort of operate and control their local school district, obviously through actions and meanings like this. And just, I think we are all in favor of a cellphone policy, but I also look at this as another, just a little by little, the chipping away of each individual community's rights to make these decisions. Maybe we would make the same decision, but it doesn't feel like we are at least part of that conversation at the state level. So that's, those are my two cents.
Thank you. Jill?
That was really well said, Tim. Thank you. Leading everything that you sent, Dr. Hill, I'm confident we spent a lot of time on this last year and where we landed with our policy, to Tim's point, that we have local control. And we asked a lot of questions, asked for current state, made decisions, and spent multiple meetings talking about it. So I'm comfortable that we leave our policy as is.
Mrs. Beatty, have anything?
I tend to agree with Jill and Tim. I mean, I, I think our current policy addresses, you know, we've spent a lot of time discussing any changes that we would make, and I do like that, you know, our policy reflects the local control of our district and that each of our handbooks in each of our schools addresses the personal device policy. So I'm comfortable right now just sticking with the policy that we have, and certainly if any changes come down through the state, then we will have to revisit it. But I like that we are keeping, you know, the option of local control in our policy.
Okay, thank you.
One of the coolest things about letting all of them go first is I can say, yeah, I agree with them. But no, just from, from the legal perspective and reviewing the, reviewing the statutes, the ideas of statutory construction, all of those things, I, I'm absolutely in agreement with, with Dr. Hill that we're complying with, with the law as, as it is right now. I'm very comfortable with that. I do like the, I, I like the local control that we have, and from what I'm understanding, the policies that we have right now are working. So we'll obviously keep track of this and see what other things Columbus might be able to dream up, and we'll, we'll kind of go from there, but I agree with all of you that I think we're in good shape right now.
Thank you. Okay, the second thing is a request for a special meeting here at the end of the month. This primarily, the focus of why we're asking for it, is to have permanent appropriations that are required by the end of September. So the closer, if not on the actual September 30th day, the closer that we can get to September 30th, the more helpful that is. So maybe if we could start with the 30th to see if there's a time that could set aside for a special meeting. Doug, timing standpoint on your end, how long?
My portion of the meeting will be maybe 15, 20 minutes.
Okay. And unless something comes up unexpected, I may have a few items to get added on.
Gives you a couple of hours.
Yeah. I think what I'm trying to get at is it'll be a quicker meeting.
Okay. Yeah, right. We've, we've heard that.
I'll stay away from piggybacking on Doug in a considered manner.
Okay. On, on September 30th in the morning through noon, it's my firm's fiscal year end, so I'm, I won't be available until the afternoon, but I'm not sure what.
Afternoon's fine, yeah. Four thirty or five?
Could we do five? Tim, are you okay?
We'd like five fifteen, five thirty.
Okay. Do you need to go later than that?
No, I just, there's gonna be drama practice, and I'm gonna have to get my son home.
Oh, yeah, okay. You want to do six, then?
Sure.
Does that give you enough time?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay.
Six o'clock would work for me, too.
You good, Jill?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, that's what I had. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, our, our next segment of the meeting is public participation. Is there anybody interested in addressing us? Okay. Oh, yes. Yeah, if you'd like to come up, up front, you'll be able to state your name and address, and you have three minutes to discuss and address any questions, et cetera, to me, and we're happy to hear from you. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. My name is Sidney Wagner. Did you read my address and all that other stuff, too?
Yes, please.
I live at 436 Dalton Drive in Wasworth. I'd like to address the Board. Is this a discussion, or is this just me talking?
You talking.
Okay. That's why I'm here. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All right. I'd like to discuss the bathrooms at the Wasworth Intermediate School, the new design of the open concept. I feel as though, and my wife and I, when we, that it is not the best layout for our children. I feel as though, I have talked to Dr. Hill, and he gave me the reasonings of the explanations of why we're doing it, such as vaping, bowling, and things that we see at the other schools. And so I understand the open concept, but I don't understand why the genders are together. I, I like, I want to reduce bullying, I want to reduce the threat of drugs or anything else that could be introduced in that environment, but mingling the genders together does not make sense to me, especially in the wings. If that was a great concern to the public, or not to the public, but to the Board when they designed it, then why are not all the bathrooms that way in the entire school? They're only that way in the wing. So I feel as though that it is a precursor, or that it starts the process of becoming more accepting of that concept of having the genders together. And I want to make it very clear that I like and I appreciate keeping our children safe. And so in that realm, or in that thought process, I would like to propose that instead of having them be left and right in the same bathroom area, that the boys can be on the top and the girls can be on the bottom, still maintaining the goals of reducing the bullying, the vaping, everything else, because the bathrooms still remain the same, but we are separating the genders, boys on top, girls on bottom. And so I would like the Board to consider these aspects, or these, this request, and proceed from there. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Did you want to address any of that right now, or is that something we want to follow up on later with Mr. Cobb?
I can share a couple, a couple of things. When, when there was the discussion in July of 2023 is the one that sticks out the most, when we were going through that budget revision process, there was a lengthy discussion that did happen at that special meeting on this topic. And I told Mr. Wagner when we met that one of the things that was discussed was the whole idea of boys on one floor, girls on the other floor. And during that discussion, it was moved away from to just keep it with boys on one side, girls on the other, your directive, within the same, within the same hallway. What Mr. Wagner shared is absolutely what I had shared with him, the whole idea of why we moved to that concept to begin with when we had those discussions. We have been keeping a, a close eye on things, say, that is, as recent as this afternoon, I talked to Mr. Cobb and a number of teachers at the Intermediate School to find out if we had experienced any type of problems, issues, concerns. And what I was, what I was told is that so far, things are going really well. And matter of fact, some of the teachers commented that as far as bathroom use goes, that things are running better than usual, that students are in and out and back to class quicker than they've ever been in relation to, to things. So we are keeping an eye on, on the situation. We are trying to get a, an understanding of how it actually is working in real time, now that it's, now that it's there, understand the concern that's being shared. That's what we're, we're doing, and that's what is being reported right now at the time being.
Could we, maybe for people who aren't aware or didn't get a chance to take the tour, explain?
Sure.
How the bathrooms are?
Yeah, the bathrooms are set up in the academic wings for the ability to basically view down a hallway, and on either side of the hallway are four doors, which are, they're like opening and going into a closet, they're floor-to-ceiling doors that lock from the inside and show occupied on the outside. So what we've designed is something where we eliminate the ability for an unsupervised area where students go in and around a corner, then into a space where it's hard to supervise. We, we eliminate for the possibility of mass congregating in that type of an area, and where we see problems that occur in some of our other buildings, including the high school, whether it's vaping, fighting students out of sight so they're just trying to skip class, whatever it is, the challenges that are there, because staff can see directly down the hall to make sure that no one's just loitering in the area. As far as the student use goes, the, the individual use facilities provide more privacy for students than they have in a traditional bathroom as well, which is another thing that we're told students really like. Because of some of the challenges we have in the larger, more traditional-style restrooms, we have students that openly talk about not wanting to use bathrooms during the school day. And so the design that's in place now, we believe, has helped to address that issue for students. But, you know, it also, like I said, gives more privacy, which some could say then gives the ability for other things to happen in there. But because it's a hallway and not an enclosed bathroom area where all of these doors are off of, it's just like any other hallway in our buildings where we have cameras and other things, we can see who's gone into an area. If we have a problem within an individual use area, we can see who went into that before or after we had the problem, not which thirty kids ran around the corner and came out when the vape detector went off. So there's a variety of, of different things. It is a different design. We did only put it in the academic wings because that's where the students spend the majority of their day. And we wanted to be able to have the larger, more traditional facilities available in the larger spaces where we have the large congregation. So the commons area, the cafeteria, will be used when we have events in the gym or the Performing Arts Center with the community. And then another facility that's down the hall by the gymnasium as well, that's the more. And then another facility that's down the hall by the gymnasium as well, that's the more traditional bathrooms. But we focused on those academic wings because that's, that's where students spend the bulk, the bulk of their day.
Is it true that if a student or family isn't comfortable using that setup in the academic wing, that they would be allowed to use the traditional?
Yes, yes, that's, that's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Cobb can speak to this, but I believe we've instructed all staff at the school that if somebody's not comfortable using the single-use facilities, that we have regular facilities that are available. It's actually, it's interesting, it's kind of the reverse of what we have in other buildings. We have single-use facilities in this, in this school that we're in here, just set up in a different way. They're not as, they're not as plentiful. But if we have students that are not wanting to use the regular traditional bathrooms here, those single-use facilities can be used, talking with our administration. So it's kind of the opposite concept of what we're traditionally used to.
And sir, I would like to thank you for taking the time to come talk to us tonight and for doing it so respectfully and discussing and sharing your concerns. I personally, when this whole concept came out, shared some of the same concerns you did. I'm encouraged by the fact that we're continuing to watch to see how, how this operates and what the, what the effects are and things like that. And you know, I can assure you that we, administration will continue to, to monitor that, as Dr. Hill said. And if you have other concerns going forward, we, we really appreciate the fact that you came tonight to speak to us. I'd just like to ask and make sure that we continue to monitor this going forward, so. Anybody else have anything?
No.
Okay, great, thank you. Anybody else want to chat with us? Okay. Thank you again, sir, I appreciate it. Okay, moving on to administrative items, Dr. Cobb.
Tonight in personnel consent, I have items one through two for your consideration. There were some additional items that came out of the addendum this afternoon, one A four, one B two, and one E, supplemental contracts eighty-two through ninety-one. LPDC is our licensure committee that does renewals of licensure for approval that then goes to the state level. PDC is our professional development committee, if you're wondering what those, yeah, what those are. So at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. I recommend to you for approval, personnel consent items one through two, including the addendum items that came out today.
Okay, may I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, Mr. Beeman.
Jill Stevens.
Aye.
Tim Beck.
Aye.
Julie Beatty.
Aye.
Amanda Gordon.
Aye.
Next, I have action consent items one through fifteen. Item fifteen was on the addendum today. It's a memorandum of understanding between you and the Wadsworth Educational Support Personnel Association for a position that will assist with our facilities and ground supervisor, the head maintenance mechanic position. In addition to those, items one through fourteen are, most of them are written about. I wanted to call attention, item seven, there's a number of policies that are on here for a first reading. These are policies by and large that are the result of changes necessary due to the state budget bill, House Bill ninety-six. If you approve a first reading tonight, the intention would be to bring these back to you for a second reading and adoption at your special meeting on the thirtieth of this month, so that they're officially in place when the law goes into effect that day. And then item ten, we want to thank the band boosters for their continued support and the donation that's on the agenda here tonight. So at this time, I recommend to you, action consent items one through fifteen. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, may I get a motion in a second? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Roll call, Mr. Beeman.
Tim Beck.
Aye.
Julie Beatty.
Aye.
Amanda Gordon.
Aye.
Jill Stevens.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have an item C under that section, the Assistant Superintendent Recommendation. Item C one, if I could get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second. Roll call, Mr. Beeman.
Julie Beatty.
Aye.
Amanda Gordon.
Aye.
Jill Stevens.
Aye.
Tim Beck.
Aye.
Doug, it's your turn.
Thank you. Just two items tonight. One, since the Wadsworth Library serves as a school district library, your authority to approve any members to their, their board of trustees, so they have a recommendation for Chris Seber for January twenty-twenty-six through twenty-three-two, and then of course, my financial reports.
Okay, motion in a second?
So moved.
Second. Questions, discussion? Roll call, Doug?
Julie Beatty.
Aye.
Amanda Gordon.
Aye.
Jill Stevens.
Aye.
Tim Beck.
Aye.
Okay, is that it, Doug? Okay, great. Okay, legislative update. Tim, we're waiting with bated breath.
Oh, yes. It's been, it's been fun. Lots going on always, it seems like this year, it was a good year to start this. Got suckered into it, I think, but I'm learning a lot. I'm just kidding, I like it. I mean, I seriously am learning a lot. It's good to pay attention to what's happening, local and state government. One thing that might be of interest that's maybe people heard about there, the governor has initiated a property tax reform work group. Of course, people may have a lot of thoughts about property taxes right now, but I want you to know, I think this is a good thing. There are, there have been some meetings throughout August for this work group, particularly when it comes to the fair school funding. And there's been a portion of the conversation with fair school funding that has been presented. So hopefully, they have our best interests at heart, including how they can perhaps think the goal would be to shift away from local taxes to residential property owners, reducing the average state share percentages and the mechanics of the state funding formula. It's complicated, but this has been a conversation for many, many years. It is continuing. As far as House Bill ninety-six, the governor did veto a handful of things in that bill. Only one item at present has been overridden with the House and will be soon be voted on in the Senate, and that is item number sixty-six, which has to do with emergency and replacement levies. So there is some conversation that's taking place in the Senate, and I imagine they will be voting on this soon, or they'll table it. But that could have an effect on how we move forward with any sort of, or not just we, all school districts in the state when it comes to emergency and replacement levies. So if you want to Google that, item number sixty-six of House Bill ninety-six.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Amanda.
Yes.
If I could just make a couple of quick comments about the property tax reform and all the current discussions that are happening. Many people in our community, about a week ago, probably received their updated property values from the county auditor as part of the reappraisal from Medina County. And from what I'm hearing, the average increase was around twenty-five, twenty-six percent for property owners within the Wadsworth City School District. And I think often when you get those letters, there's a misconception out there that a twenty-five percent increase in my property values means a twenty-five percent increase in my tax bill. Since Wadsworth City Schools is not on what is called the twenty mil floor, what happens is property values increase the effective millage rate on voted levies. So any levy that our community has approved will be rolled back to match the average increase in property values. So there's also these magical things called inside mills that don't roll back. So your inside mills, you will see a slight increase in your property tax bill associated with those increased values. But all of the voted levies, which is the majority of our revenue stream and your property tax bill, will be rolled back. So you do not pay more in property taxes than you did in previous years or in the year that that levy was approved by the voters. So usually, a twenty-five percent increase in property values equates to usually around a seven, eight percent increase in your property tax bill. So I just wanted to assure people that may have seen that or got that letter that were kind of worried or freaking out a little bit about their property tax bills that may be coming up in January, to rest assured that because Wadsworth City Schools is not at the twenty mil floor, you will not see huge increases in your property tax bill, like many districts throughout the state of Ohio that are at the twenty mil floor. Over half the districts in the state of Ohio are at the twenty mil floor, hence all the discussion about property tax reform. If you're in a district that is at the twenty mil floor, you have a twenty-five percent increase in property values, you will see a twenty-five percent increase in your tax bill. And over half the districts in the state of Ohio are seeing that. Thus, all the discussion that Tim mentioned on property tax reform, whether it was in the bill that got vetoed by the governor and now coming out of this working group.
Thank you, Doug, really appreciate that. Okay, we'll move to board member items. And Ava, if you would like to give us your first report or anything you want to fill us in on how we started the school year, the floor is yours.
So it's been a busy start to the school year. Our first official day at school was on August twenty-first, but we welcomed the freshmen to the building on the fifteenth so they could get used to the change before the first day. Our seniors recently completed senior kickoff where we spent our day learning about future life skills and helpful ways to prepare for college. The next morning, we had senior sunrise at the middle school track, where we gather to enjoy breakfast and watch the sunrise together. Some important upcoming dates and events are going to be pictured out on September fifteenth. Homecoming Spirit Week will be on September twenty-second through the twenty-sixth, with a pep rally on the twenty-sixth. And the dance will take place on the twenty-seventh. The PSAT is going to be on October sixteenth, and there will be informational meeting, an informational meeting for College Credit Plus on October twenty-eighth. College visits will start later this week, and college advising appointments are officially available for students and parents. The Wadsworth Art Department is currently preparing for their fall show, Lost Girl, and their Christmas comedy. The show choir is getting ready for its fall concert on October tenth, which will be broadcast on WCTV. And the band has a show this weekend and next. Our football team is currently undefeated, three and O. This week will be the first conference game of the season. September nineteenth is Salute the Troops Night, and we invite all veterans and active duty members to join us for a night of fun. Competition cheer has officially started practicing for another amazing season. Volleyball is also undefeated, and senior Rowan Kelly has set a new school record for a thousand eight hundred and twenty career assists. I am truly so thankful for this opportunity, and I can't wait to come back next month with more information.
Thank you very much, that was excellent job, and we appreciate it, thank you. Hey, Jill.
Thanks, I'll go first and I won't take everything, how's that?
Thank you.
First, I wanted to thank our principals for continuing to support our student of the months and the teachers who dominated, because you're only a couple of weeks in, so appreciate that time and the energy that those students bring. And as Amanda said, I'm always just a little less worthy after I hear about their accomplishments. I also want to thank, we're very fortunate as a community to have a big list of volunteers that we approved tonight. We can't operate without them. And by the same token, we have a highly engaged teacher and staff for our supplements, which we need as well to operate the district. So thank you for that. As Ava said, sports are off to a good, good start to the year. It's been a fun year, looking forward to the rest of it, thank you.
Thank you. Tim?
Yeah, lots of great Friday nights the last couple of weeks, so congrats to the football team. Also want to give a shout out to the band and Mrs. Hire, they sound great so far this year, so I'm just excited to see where they go. Drama, the drama department has three plays that will be taking place this fall. The middle school play, or musical, is Finding Nemo Junior, that will be in October. The high school play, Lost Girl, is in November. And the high school comedy is a holiday themed, it's called the Christmas movie, what is it called? The Holiday Channel Christmas Movie Wanderathon. So that sounds pretty exciting to me. It's going to be in December, and that's a comedy. So look forward to those shows coming up this fall. I was also excited to see that there's a meeting, I think tomorrow night at seven PM, for the middle school DC trip. I know there was a lot of conversation over the last few years about that. So I'm excited to see the return of that trip, and I know families will be excited about that as well. And then lastly, just give a shout out to all the PTOs, lots of activity in the elementary schools. And again, to Jill's point, it could be done without volunteers and many of the parents that help out with that, so thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Beatty?
Yes, I guess want to continue on the elementary school level. Tim and I had the opportunity to go to ISAM, and they unveiled their new library again, a labor of love from their ISAM PTO. And so it was fabulous to be a part of that. I just certainly do love all of the creativity that happens on the elementary level. Love that Valley View is using their custodial staff and their maintenance staff to nominate students for different awards throughout the day, which I think is great that all of the staff gets involved in that activity. I certainly love seeing a couple of our elementary buildings, that Lee Franklin and Lincoln are having students try new fruits and vegetables, like farmer's markets, that type of thing. So I think that's wonderful to introduce, you know, those, those types of things to the kiddos. Certainly with Wadsworth Intermediate School, I know you've had your first town meeting, town hall meeting, which was part of our, on our website that was shared, and our Facebook page that was shared. And, you know, certainly just want to, you know, instruct or tell families to, I see that in all of the counselors' sections in the newsletters, to encourage families who are eligible to sign up for the Feeding Medina County Weekender Bags, as well as, I know schools on all levels are looking for support for their Backpack Connection program. So starting off the new year, there are families that need some, some help. And we certainly are a district that are, that are here to help them. So I'm hoping everybody's had a great couple of weeks so far, and welcome back, everybody.
Thank you. A few things, Ohio University is playing Ohio State this weekend. And I noted from a Facebook post from the band that Wadsworth is going to have five former Wadsworth Grizzly band members in the, in the two bands. So I thought that was pretty cool. It's probably going to be a lot more exciting than the actual football game, but yay band, very excited about that. Want to put a plug in for the Franklin School Mum Sale. If they reach their goal of nine hundred units, Mrs. Kelly gets taped to the wall. So I'm really rooting for, for you there. So. So tell your friends, tell your neighbors, call the school, buy the mums, and Mrs. Kelly can meet her fate here, so. And then this, this coming Sunday, in the, in the cafeteria, they'll be having their, football will be having the annual mattress sale. So I wanted to put a plug in there. I personally bought two or three over, over the years, they've been very good, it's a nice fundraiser. Something like Tim mentioned as well, with respect to the band. I, I got to sit in the stands at the Medina game, and I was at the section right next to the band. I don't normally get to sit over there because I usually sit elsewhere. But I, I told Mrs. Hire as well, they represent our community and our school and their families so well. They're so well behaved, their chairs are full of spirit, and I agree, Tim, they, they sound absolutely fabulous. So we're very fortunate to have, you know, not only the band, but our sports teams and others that represent us all so well. So I was just very proud of that. And then we were the Browns game of the week this week, so thank you to everybody that voted multiple times. I may or may not have done it a hundred times or more myself, but seeing, seeing Wadsworth up on the big screen at, at the Browns stadium and highlighting just another example of all the great things that, that we're doing here in Wadsworth was, was just wonderful. So thanks to everybody that supports each of our, each of our groups. So with that, we're going to retire into executive session for purposes of A two, which is employment, A seven, which is compensation, and E matters required to be kept confidential by federal law, rules, and state statutes. I got them all right. I got them all right?
Yes.
Okay. If I could get a motion in a second to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second. Okay, roll call, Doug?
Julie Beatty?
Aye.
Amanda Gordon?
Aye.
Jill Stevens?
Aye.
Tim Beck?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, have a good evening.
Yes, we're gonna be made on this call.